All righty. With that, we've got the panel rolling. All right. I'll call to order the regular village board meeting of Monday, April 18th, 2022. It's 6:02. Kathryn, will you call the roll?
Trustee Mahoney.
Yeah, here.
Trustee Coonsy.
Present.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Tribber.
Here.
Trustee Sauter.
Here.
And President Lyneum will not be here.
He's on vacation.
On vacation.
All right. I'll invite everybody to the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance certified of United States America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So the first item on the agenda is a public hearing. So pursuant to Chapter 65 of the Illinois-
Public comment.
Public comment. You're right. Does anyone in the audience have a comment on agenda items only? If so, now's your chance. Seeing none. Then we'll move to the public hearing. Pursuant to Chapter 65, the Illinois compiled statutes, I hereby call to order the public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 proposed village budget pursuant to statute and ordinance notice of this public hearing was published April 8th, 2022 in the Daily Herald. Kathryn, will you please call the roll?
To open the public meeting.
Yes, to open the meeting, yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Tribber.
Here.
And Trustee Sauter.
Here.
I declare the public hearing of the full year 2023 budget open. I will now turn the public hearing over to the village administrator Erica Storley and finance director Brandis Martin for opening comments on the proposed budget.
Thank you. So tonight, we're having a public hearing to hear comments from the public about the 2022/2023 budget ending April 30th, 2023. Is there anything you wanted to add, Brandis?
I just wanted to say that after our budget workshop in March, March 21st, the only additional item or change that we made was at the board's request was the $2,500 donation to the historical society. We made minimal changes to anticipated revenues or end-of-year expenditures, but that was the only addition that we made. So everything's pretty much exactly as it was submitted during the budget workshop.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the village board?
No.
Seeing none. Are there any from the audience? All right. So now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I will move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Trustee Mahoney.
Aye.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
And Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
All right. And so, since there were no comments, we will move forward with the motions later on in the agenda on approving the budget. So, moving on to consent agenda, I may need a motion for consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the regular village board meeting minutes dated March 21st, 2022.
Second. Well, you need to do it all. This is omnibus, so read them all.
Oh, sorry.
And then you take one vote.
Very good. Also, I will move to approve a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute a letter of agreement with AT&amp;T of 220 Wisconsin Avenue, Waukesha, Wisconsin, 53186, for $44,347.96 for underground utility conflicts at the site of the Christina Drive Traffic Signal Project. And I also move to approve an ordinance authorizing the seating of private activity bonding authority.
Second.
Are there any questions about any of the items, or does anyone want one of the items removed for further conversation? Seeing none. Kathryn?
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
And Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Okay. So the next agenda items is welcoming the folks from Santa's Village to tell us a little bit about their expansion that they're proposing. Just introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Jason Serpian from Santa's Village. This is Samantha Anis, one of my partners. We wanted to make a small presentation about our expansion project that we're working on currently, and I'd like to thank you all for your time and allowing us to come chat with you here this evening. Samantha's kind of handed out a copy of pretty much everything we're going to go through. Believe it or not, that's actually me back in 1993. I know it's hard to tell. I look exactly like that. Just kind of a few little pictures that we've taken over the years. Again, that's kind of back in the beginning. I started at the park in 1991, and you can see us here at the reopening and official reopening in 2011. And here, 2019, we were working on the beginning of our Phase Two of our water park, which was a couple of water slides that we had put in. There's the drawings of those before we took delivery of those slides. A little bit of history about Santa's Village. Originally opened in 1959, construction was started in 1958. The Polar Dome was opened in 1962. 1983 saw a major expansion. It was one of the first water parks in the country to use manufactured slides. Until that point, there was only a few water parks utilizing water slides, and most of them were actually made out of concrete, which I can't even imagine trying to slide down. The bottom picture, you can see the park closed in '05. Everything was auctioned off in '06, and that was one of the first pictures I took of the park when we walked into a little bit of a mess. If you've had an opportunity to come to the park, I think we've got it cleaned up a little bit better than what it looks like in that picture there. That's much better. Thank you. You can see here a little bit of information about the park over the last 63 years. Of course, I've only been affiliated in ownership since 2010. You can see that the park has brought in quite a few visitors to the village. You can see also that, obviously, they visit quite a few different places in town amongst our other communities here in the area. We've spent a little bit over $5 million in marketing efforts to bring visitors to the town, obviously, to our park, but we know that they're stopping in other places. I wish I could get some sort of a fee from Dunkin' Donuts for cleaning up all the cups that we see walking in the morning. Everybody loves to hit Dunkin' before they come out to the park, which is great. And then, obviously, we're more than helpful to send some of our guests to other places throughout the community if they ask for restaurants. We don't take offense to them not wanting to eat funnel cakes and hot dogs, so we're happy to send them down to town here to the great restaurant district that's down here. And we've seen visitors, too, also coming from pretty much every state across the country. The most of the visitors that we see come in from a 50-mile radius of East Dundee. That's where we kind of prioritize our marketing efforts in that area. One interesting thing that we did this year, I know that there's been talk of, I believe, a hotel coming to town possibly at some point. We brought in a new hotel partner, which is actually a large conglomerate of hotels, and we've seen about 4% of our admissions this year actually went through our Arez, which is the hotel provider, which was kind of interesting for us. So we had a lot of people stay in the area, hotels, typically Hoffman Estates and the Elgin area for the hoteling. Some more really nice pictures of what we encountered back in 2010. Just kind of a look at what was there after the closing and prior to us reopening the park. Just a little bit of in-depth on staffing. We hire about 250 staff members for the season. Those are seasonal folks. Most of them are from the community or surrounding communities, and a lot of these folks, including myself, this was their first job, so it's kind of an experience that you usually remember forever. I know I can remember some of mine. And here's some pictures of what the park looks like today. Here's our water park expansion. This was Phase One in this area here, and then Phase Two are these water slides that I had showed a picture of in a drawing earlier. We currently have 21 dry rides, and you can see this was Phase One and Phase Two of our water park area, and everything was brought in since 2010. There was literally nothing left in the park except a really big mess from the auction. Nothing had been done inside the park prior to us coming in. The Polar Dome was used for some activities that didn't pan out for many reasons, and we've kind of since cleaned everything up and made it about as pretty as we possibly could. So we have one big project coming up. It's kind of got two subparts. Our water park expansion, this is our Phase Three. This will really put us on the map as a water park. This would include an 800 linear foot lazy river. Inside the river area, you can kind of see there are some cabanas drawn in at this time here for private seating, and then also a spray deck in the center here that would also kind of help with our younger demographic a little bit. This would be a regular flow lazy river, not an action river, as our demographic is pretty much 2 to 10 years old, and then, of course, all the moms and dads that come along with that. The water park, as we have started, it seems to be our number-one driver in attendance. We definitely need to expand it. We can only fit about 650 people in this area. By doing this addition, we could, our capacity would be about 2,000 people combined between this area, the expansion area, and then up into the other current water park area. We're pretty much ready to start on this phase. We've just got to work out a few little hiccups and hopefully get started on this in the near future. The Polar Dome, if you're not familiar with that, was a very unique ice arena in the area. I think Coach Tribber had probably been there a time or two, is my guess. But it kind of had a unique experience, if you're not familiar with it. It's what we call a one-sheat or a single ice rink, basically, which is kind of unique to the area a little bit. And that smell, if you've ever been to the Polar Dome, it doesn't go away. It's still literally in there to this day. So, doing this renovation, it's currently being used by one of our tenants. We are not renewing their lease in this building going forward, so we'd like to bring it back to an ice rink. I've got a few more pictures of kind of the area in there, turn it into a nice dining experience inside, which would be for the skaters, the visitors of the skaters, and then also just the general public could come and enjoy a meal also. There's a snack bar area that we would also refurbish. The bar is inside the restaurant, talking about doing video gaming in there, and then there's an area for a large game room, which could be kind of pushed toward all different ages, whether it's adults or kids doing redemption or VR or what have you. Here's kind of a breakdown of the water park expansion, what we could potentially offer to the village. With anticipated growth of about 30 to 40% from introduction of a water park, which is pretty much the industry standard, we would see amusement tax revenues kind of in this range right here. And then you can see with food sales potential here for $1 million in taxable income from those sales and also merchandise. We would expect the growth of about 100,000 visitors once the water park is in full swing, and this really kind of puts us on the map as a water park in the area. I think that's pretty much some of those numbers. Again, these numbers are all in your booklet that we did pass out. The Polar Dome is one of those areas that it has been used since the closing. However, it does not look like the rest of our area. It looks quite different. Would need a complete renovation. All the equipment used to make ice would basically need to be redone. This is kind of our thought of a restaurant as kind of a sports bar sort of feeling without too much emphasis on bar. Just to kind of reiterate that, it's more of a restaurant that serves alcohol for adults, obviously, which is kind of that nice, regular, old Alpine Room is what it was called, feeling with the fireplace, some sports on TVs, and again, bringing in the general public, not just skaters or skater's families. It's kind of an old picture. I think this one dates back to '72, if I remember correctly. Same exact Santa that's been at the park, right here. Everybody laughs. You guys must know him, too, I guess. So basically, that's kind of the gist of the Polar Dome attraction. This is kind of a moving target a little bit for us. We've talked to many hockey coaches and organizations that do hockey. We feel that we could turn the hockey rink into a year-round destination as opposed to, in the past, it's been a seasonal operation. We do have a Plan B, and if that does not work out as a summer opportunity, we will do some other activities inside. We won't just shutter it as it was in the past. So that's kind of our plan for the Polar Dome there. This is what we're seeking, an assistance of $3.5 million to complete the project. We are literally ready to go to get started on both portions of this. We do have all of our permits and engineered drawings are completed. We're basically just kind of sitting on those for a minute. We do need to turn those into the village to get approval for the buildings, which is really just a pump building. I know Joe Hines needs to look at this for watershed issues and such. And again, this is kind of what the water park portion would be for, with the lazy river, the spray deck, the cabanas, and then another food venue down there. And then the Polar Dome, we feel we could open potentially by August of this coming year. Appreciate the time, and thank you for the village's support. Here's my information. I know I have limited time, and I appreciate the opportunity to come chat with you. Feel free to reach out to me with anything else, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you'd like right now.
Thank you. Quick question. August of this year or next year for this?
August of this year.
Okay. Thank you.
It's pretty ambitious, but we're kind of crazy, so 24/7 is how we roll.
Okay.
I heard that you're looking for $3.5 million.
Correct.
In what form?
I guess whatever forms are available. I don't know what is available to us, bonds, loans against amusement tax, TIF funds. We're open to anything. We spent a large amount of money on this park, a little over $10 million in the last 10 years, and we're just, we'd like to do these two projects. I think it'll bring a lot more people into the area. It'll increase the amusement tax revenues back to the village, sales tax portions, and a lot more people coming to the village to spend more money, restaurants, bars, Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, and such.
Just going to ask if you had thought about-
The hardest one now.
If you had thought about doing any esports gaming in the one area that you were talking about, doing the VR?
We have. I don't, so I'm not a big esports guy. We've looked into it a little bit. We've played with different ideas in the Polar Dome. Our original idea was not ice, but it seems that there is a need for ice time in this area. Is Trustee Tribber shaking his head? Yes. So we feel that ice is our best bet. The area where the gaming room would be is not really that big. I think the square footage is around 600 square feet. Samantha literally just said, "Don't quote me on that." So there's limited area in there, but esports is something we've actually looked at in the past to do instead of ice on a much grander scale, but I'm just not, I don't have a great answer for that yet, except that that additional area is really not that big. I believe it's 600 or 900 square feet.
Gotcha. Okay.
Is it paintball explosion that's currently in the ice dome?
So I can only answer so much on that. I can tell you that their lease has not been renewed past October 31st of 2022.
For, but not just for the ice dome, but for their entire-
Correct, for the entire property.
You also mentioned that the lazy river kind of legitimizes you as having a water park. Where else is the other closest water parks around?
So the closest ones would be Raging Waves in Yorkville, and then Yorkville, I'm sorry, Rockford at Six Flags, Hurricane Harbor, I believe they call that one now, and then also at Six Flags in Gurnee. They, I don't think they have a lazy river there, but they do have a very significant amount of water activities there. Very significant.
So you're talking about 50 miles or so?
Pretty close. Probably a little shy of that, but yeah, definitely in that region.
And is the lazy river going around where your lights went for the Christmas show when you drove around? Is that the area you're talking back there?
Well, first of all, did you enjoy the light?
It was great.
Okay, so I'm making sure. As you're getting to the end of the drive, so there's kind of that flat spot just past all the new water stuff, it'd be in that flat area. I don't know how to go back. Is that a possibility? This actually kind of shows it pretty good. So as you're coming around that back road, it's kind of right here, and you're looking from the lazy river up that hill to the back of the park area.
Which is like behind Tudor Time. What was the Tudor Time?
Yeah, that would be much closer to the Tudor Time. Correct, yep.
All right, cool. Okay. Just have to get a visual.
Yep, for sure. Yep, that nice flat area right there. It is all engineered. We have the IDPH permits and everything. We just need to get the village's blessing to move on, and then, obviously, we need to find funding for this. Typically, we've found funding from normal banks. No bank will actually finance an activity like this because they're not financing anything tangible. It's concrete, it's rebar, it's a lot of piping. This was actually originally set the budget at $680,000. That was prior to all the madness that's happened over the last 16 to 18 months, and we're anticipating this portion of it running close to $2 million now. And if you guys don't have any more questions, I'm available at any time. Feel free to email, call. I'm happy to come in and talk again, but I just appreciate your time and letting us come talk to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
So, thank you. Appreciate that. I have been working with Jason for the last six weeks or so, along with Trustee Tribber, to sort of formulate how this could potentially proceed. I don't think we have, you know, we don't have a presentation of exactly how this pans out, but we wanted to take this opportunity to give them a chance to share what their vision is and what, if they were able to realize this vision, how it could benefit the village. So if there's a general consensus to proceed, I'll definitely have conversations with them to work out the details of what might work and bring that back for future consideration that we dumped up here.
Thumbs up.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. So the next two items on the agenda kind of go hand in hand. The first one is zoning, a zoning change, and then the second one is application of that zoning change to a particular business. So entertain a motion.
Okay. I'll move to approve an ordinance amending the East Dundee zoning ordinance to add a new special use to the B3 service business zoning district for firearm coating, refinishing, adding accessories, and general modifications as accessory uses to a gun shop. And are you saying you want me to make?
No, just take one.
Second.
All righty. I see the petitioners are here. Do you want to give out any highlights or?
Sure. I'll just introduce. So we do have representatives from Get Guns here. They're the ones who requested this change initially because there's a, I believe, a change in the way that the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms arm of the federal government classifies gun dealers in terms of what the modifications are that are currently being made. So they came to us and said, "We would like to get this other classification to continue to do basically everything that we've always done. We're not changing anything materially." And so Chris and I worked with our staff attorneys to develop this text amendment, which would apply to any businesses in the B3, I believe, the B3 business area, and specifically allowing for these modifications. If you want to just share a little bit about what you're seeking and why you're here today, if you just want a little bit more to what I just said.
Good evening. My name is Greg Trupino. I'm the owner. ATF now requires that if you do any kind of modification to a firearm, you add sights, you spray it a different color, you have to have what they call a manufacturing license. And this is now in, all we're trying to do is be in compliance with alcohol, tobacco, and firearms for this. A lot of times, the dealers just call the village, and the village says, "Sure, you know." I mean, it's not anything we're going to be doing like big dats of chemicals or anything like that. It's just spray painting. What it is is sarcoating firearms. But alcohol, tobacco, and firearms are saying that if you take this scope and put it on a gun, that's manufacturing.
So that's a good distinction to make because we have a different description or definition of what manufacturing is. So our definition will not allow them to do what the village considers manufacturing, but this definition will allow them to do what ATF considers manufacturing. So that is an important distinction to make.
And the real, sort of the tricky issue is that in this zoning district, we don't allow manufacturing, and ATF is defining this activity as manufacturing, and so we threaded the needle here with this.
I mean, are we designating this B3 zoning to just their address only? Is that the idea?
No.
No, they're already B3.
Yeah. It allows an accessory, as an accessory use, a type of activity that the ATF is calling manufacturing.
Okay. So we're just adjusting the actual zoning definition? Got it.
Right. And that was helpful for me to understand, too, because I was wanting to ensure that the primary use stayed the primary use, and this was an accessory use, and it, which is a secondary use, which is less than the majority of the use. And so if the primary use is that it is a gun shop, which is the primary use that they have, you know, the majority of the use is the gun shop. This is an accessory to that use, so it always must be less than the primary use, which is somewhat complicated in the terminology, but you get the gist. Yes. So legally, you're not, I know, I know your desire is not to magically become a gun manufacturer, but legally, they also cannot become a gun manufacturer because of the, because it's an accessory.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And they can't become primarily a gun painting business?
Right.
Right, okay.
Cool.
So this is what you were doing already, and it's basically ATF changed something, and so now you are like asking for it to go along?
I am just becoming more compliant with their rules and regulations.
And our code is updating to be compliant.
We are, actually.
Yeah, we are.
And as he was saying, you know, some communities might say, "Oh, that's fine," but we made sure that it's consistent with how the code reads, so it's done properly in my opinion.
No other questions?
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
And Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Take a motion for item number C.
I will move to approve an order and amending the special use permit for a gun shop granted in ordinance number 12-36 to grant a special use permit for the accessory use of firearm coating, refinishing, adding accessories, and general modifications for the property located at 970 Dundee Avenue, East Dundee, Illinois.
Second. So for this one, I've talked to some of you about this already, but the conditions that were applied when this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission were recommended to be forwarded to the board for approval, but since then, we've spent additional conversations with both the applicant and the village attorney, where we have sort of understood more clearly what the applicant will be and will not be allowed to do. And so it's recommended now from staff that we can remove those conditions and not put ourselves in any liability or unrestricted place, because, again, going back to that primary use versus accessory use, and because the special use permit strictly says what they're allowed to do, we don't then have to strictly say what they're not allowed to do. So if that makes sense, and if that's something the board is willing to consider, if you do want to go that route instead of the route that was originally presented, then it would be necessary to make a motion to amend this item.
Okay. So what, I mean, this has, currently has those limitations on it, is what we're saying?
There's two conditions in the-
In the packet.
In the packet, so we'd have to make a motion to remove them.
Gotcha. Well, I will. I will modify my motion to, what do we want to say? Negate the two, remove the two conditions that were applied to this permit.
Second.
And you would have to amend your second, or whoever did-
I'll amend my second. And to clarify, we're doing that because, as you said, and we just discussed a minute and a half ago, pretty much the conditions are already being met by the primary versus accessory. Correct. So there's no need for further-
So there's no need for further.
Built into the text, of the general text.
So there's no need for further conditions.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Satter?
Yes.
I'll make, I need a motion for the next item, item D, the big one.
Is, are you done?
Yeah.
You're good to go?
Thank you.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
I'll make a motion for discussion, consideration to approve an ordinance adapting the financial year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget.
Second.
All right.
All right.
Questions? You want to do an overview on the highlights?
Sure, so as we talked about in the public hearing earlier this evening, we have not made any material changes to the budget, other than the addition of the donation. The, the complete budget was included in the packet, and I think it represents a responsible and conscientious budget as we look to go forward in the next year and really aligns our budget with our village priorities and will help us continue to grow as well as be fiscally responsible. So I appreciate the work that staff, especially Brandis, has done in compiling this budget, as well as all the department heads and staff. It takes a lot of work to pull it all together, and I'm really happy with what we've presented. And that is all. We don't have a presentation, but we'll answer any questions.
The two tax items that are coming up, they're not already in this budget, are they?
They are.
Okay. But if they don't get approved, they'll just automatically be eliminated from that? Or how will that work?
Well, I guess we should really probably reorder and take, take two of those first, if that's a possibility, because then we'll have to amend the budget to adjust for those revenue sources.
Yeah, okay. What's, what's the way to do that, I guess, is the question?
Just make a motion to move the other two up?
You don't need to, you don't need to do a formal motion. It's a small board, as long as everyone is in support of changing the order. If, if someone is against it, then we need to do it.
What I guess what I'm saying is we have, we have a motion on the table already.
You could, you could withdraw it.
We can, or we just table it for.
We don't need to be too technical about this.
We can table this for five minutes from now.
So.
Officially pause my motion.
I officially paused my second.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll redo it then when we get back to it.
All right. So then we'll go down to item H. I need a motion for.
Okay, I will move to approve an ordinance amending the Village of East Dundee, Dundee Village Code regarding a paid vehicle parking tax.
Second.
All right.
All right.
So this is a new revenue source that would be applied to any businesses in the village that have paid vehicle parking, the details of which are included in the packet. But the general consensus, or the general gist is that if you're parked over twenty-four hours in any place that requires you to pay to park your, a vehicle there, you would pay fifty cents per twenty-four hour period. If the parking is billed at a monthly rate, it would be a six dollar fee added on per month, per vehicle parked. And this would be applied to inoperable vehicles or operable vehicles and recreational vehicles parked within the village limits.
Okay.
And there's, how many businesses that are doing that?
There's at least six that we know of.
And that are charging for parking?
Yes.
And do we have any idea of like approximate number of trucks at some of these facilities? I know we had had some issues out at one, and that kind of brought some of this to our attention with the access of these cars.
Yes, so Chris did an analysis of how many acres are being allocated to this use, village-wide. And I think you came up with an estimate of like four thousand vehicles?
Yes, yes, somewhere between four and probably forty-five hundred.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
So if a, if a company just parked their own fleet in their parking lot, this wouldn't affect them?
No.
No. If we opened a parking garage in East Dundee, would this affect that?
No, because it's not paid parking.
No, but if it were?
If the village were to charge for the use of that parking structure, it could choose to charge, or it could choose to exempt itself from this ordinance.
That would be for over twenty-four hours, though, right, according to this? So if it's an overnight parking garage.
Okay.
But at any point in time, if the village had a parking structure, the village has the right to modify this to whatever it deems appropriate.
Yeah. Okay. How would that work if we don't own the land that the parking garage is on?
So, so both the state and the municipality have the ability to regulate paid parking as long as it's paid. So if, if, if there's a paid parking in, whether we own the land or somebody else owns the land, and there's paid parking, we have the ability to then regulate what we tax that at. So as long as the charge was appropriate and consistent, we could do as the board would see fit for what's best for the village.
But we wouldn't be, what you're saying is we wouldn't be obligated to collect that, even if the parking lot wasn't on our property, we would not be obligated to collect a tax due to this ordinance on a paid parking garage.
So we would, I think, trying to understand where you're going.
Well, I'm, what I, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is if somebody, say, we build a garage that's not on our village property, right? And thirty years from now, somebody decides they want to charge parking on that garage, would this tax mandatorily be applied to that? Or would we have, or would we have the option to not charge that?
Is it our use or private use? Who's owns it? If it's a governmental parking?
It's, well, I guess it would be, at that point, it would be private use, yeah.
Yeah, so if the parking was charged by the twenty-four hour period or the month, yes, a tax would be applied. But if the charge was like you, four hours you park, it would not be applied.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Joe, Joe brought up a question on whether, if it was, let's say, an apartment building that had garages perhaps, that they rented out if you chose to rent them in addition to your apartment. I know we don't have anything like that now, but that would be a monthly fee and that would, this would then apply to that.
I think the ordinance is written that you must have a minimum of twenty.
Okay.
So if the apartment complex had more than twenty units, then it would apply. But at less than twenty, it would not.
Okay.
But like I said, this, this is the first time we're potentially doing this. And so this would be our opportunity to try it out, see how it works. If there's adjustments that we need to make, you know, the village board always has the right to adjust this as it seems fit at any point in time. So just because it's enacted today doesn't mean in thirty years it'll still be in existence, or it might, it might evolve over time.
Right. It could be amended at any time.
Yes.
Or repealed.
All right.
And the rate is consistent or, or lower than what some of the surrounding areas are doing?
Yes.
For sure. So it's not going to put East Dundee at a disadvantage compared to the other.
And the, the thought behind this partly is to justify upkeep of roads in the areas that have this. And it sounds like it could be two to three hundred thousand a year in taxes in a street resurface. It looks like in our budget is like a hundred and forty thousand for a street, so that maybe would cover two streets a year getting resurfaced, like directly attributed from these funds. Does that sound like the right amount? And it does seem like that would be a good rate to cover a couple of streets a year.
Well, I, yeah, but I, well, I guess that brings up the question of this money. Is it in our ordinance where this, what fund this gets applied to?
So right now, it's going to the general fund. And until we sort of get a more solid understanding of how much it will be, right now it's just an estimate because we don't really know. I think it's a good practice to put it in the general fund. And then, once we find out exactly how much it is and can consider it to be reliable, then if the village board wants to designate where it goes, it can. But if it wants to have optimum flexibility, leave it in the general fund and then decide on a case-by-case basis every year when we do the budget.
Yeah, you can always earmark. Generally speaking, we don't recommend putting in the adopting ordinance an earmark like that that mandates, because you're hamstringing yourself. You always, in each budget year, you can always designate based on how much money there is, or we can afford to do more streets or something. And part of that decision can be based on how much you've collected here.
Yeah, and there might be eight streets one year, and then eight years until you need to do all eight again.
And the, it's, I mentioned this too. The streets that support those businesses, I would recommend in the future doing a more substantive construction method so that those streets can handle the weight of those consistently heavy use in trucks. Right now, the condition of those roads is so poor, and part of that is because it was a standard construction that we do on all of our other roads, which doesn't hold up over time. So that costs more money, and therefore it makes sense to think about implementing this.
I think the other thing to remember too is that all of this parking is special use on unimproved property. So there's no concrete, there's no retaining, water retention, or water runoff or that kind of thing right now, too. So basically what's, basically, you know, my understanding is these areas are being used, but we're not seeing any lift in the EAV of those properties because they are unimproved properties. So this is, you know, potentially a way to be able to recapture the approval of some of the special use that has been granted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, to make up for the lack of increased EAV.
Yeah, the property taxes, that would normally be getting on an approved area. Any other questions?
No.
Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Satter?
Yes.
All right, so then I will request a motion for item number G.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the Village of East Dundee Village Code regarding the amusement tax.
Second.
So the high level points on this one are that the amusement tax, as it currently states, does not include tax on streaming entertainment. And this would modify the village code to then apply that tax to streaming entertainment. So currently, if you have cable package, traditional cable, you would pay a tax on that, that the village receives. But if you were savvy enough to cut your quick cord and use some other provider, you are not being taxed. So this, in one sense, is a, a modern version of the original telecommunication tax, but it also equitably distributes the tax amongst all people, no matter what they choose for their method of entertainment. And it's budgeted at twenty-five thousand dollars this year because, like I said, it's a new revenue, and we're not exactly sure how much it will come in at. That's an estimate based on an implementation date of July first. And I think that's it.
And this is something that a lot of other surrounding communities have already enacted?
Yes.
This is one of those items that's similar to where the taxes, you have to catch up with the technology, you know, and that, it's like internet purchases. You know, for a long time, they went completely untaxed, even though you go to, into a brick and mortar store, you buy the same thing, you're paying a tax. And this way, these, these platforms are changing, and so it allows the tax to be paid by all for the same item that they're buying.
Do we know what the average-ish tax for cable is? Is it like around this five percent, or is it?
Yes.
Okay. Only curious because those of us who have cut the cord usually have about eh, four streaming services. So that's where.
I mean, interestingly, the, the analysis of this, a lot of revenue comes from the pay-per-view and the rental. So if you traditionally went to Blockbuster Video and rented a movie, you would have paid a tax. If you're renting that same movie on, you know, Amazon Prime or some other pay-per-view, you're currently not getting taxed. And so this would apply that same tax. If you go to Redbox or whatever, currently, same, same tax would be applied.
So it's been found that that's where most of it comes from?
It's, it's a significant portion, surprisingly.
And our revenues from Comcast have decreased over the years as well, since streaming has become.
Yeah, they just go, it goes.
Yep.
Okay. I'm just going to say that I don't support this. We're not providing a service here. We're just saying we're missing to, uh, money that we used to get from cable, and now it's going to streaming instead, but we're not providing the streaming. So I don't see a justification to tax for us to collect a tax on it personally.
But were we providing cable?
No, but if, if a, a mistake was made in the past, I'm not comfortable just doing it for the sake of momentum.
Telephone and anything like that?
I know.
Okay. Just throwing it out there. It's all the things.
I understand.
The rationale is often that the village infrastructure is utilized, the village right of ways, to provide the infrastructure necessary for things like cable or streaming or telephone or whatever to be able to exist. So it's, I totally understand where you're coming from, and, but it just wanted to add that.
Well, for sure, though, we are, we are taxing internet, you know, use, like, right? On the utility tax.
I defer to the village attorney.
Yeah, I mean, the actual connection, I mean, I.
Yeah, I mean, I get a bill from Comcast, or AT&T, actually, for my internet service. Am I paying East Dundee a tax for that internet?
A telecommunications tax.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Any other questions?
I can't wait to stop worrying about taxes.
Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
No.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
No.
And Trustee Satter?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Then I think at this point, we can move up to item D. Would you like to unpause?
I will unpause my motion. Do I need to read, read it?
Yeah, you can re, remove, or withdraw.
I will remove. What was it, D you said?
D.
D, yeah.
I move for a discussion, consideration to approve an ordinance adapting the financial year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget.
Need a second?
Second? Sorry, I forgot.
Any discussion? I know we've been talking about this a lot.
We did have a lot of discussion.
Right?
Yeah.
Any other concerns? All right, Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Satter?
Yes.
Great. Item E, is there a motion?
I will move for a discussion and consideration to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three compensation plan. We need a second.
Second.
I'll defer to Brandis on this one. And Brandis, can you use the microphone, please? Everybody who's not able to attend can hear you clearly.
Sure works. Okay. Our compensation plan essentially allows a three percent cost of living increase to all of our nine union employees with a one percent merit, based on a performance review. It also includes a nine percent cost of living or adjustment, I guess, for our union, Public Works Union, based on their contract that was just passed. And I think it's three percent also for our police department.
And this is all budgeted for?
Yes.
So it's part of the budget we just?
Correct.
Cool.
Any questions?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sodder?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item F.
Uh, move to discuss and consider to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances, which has to do with garbage and refuse.
Second.
So.
I will defer to Brandis on this one.
Back up.
So this ordinance essentially extends the sunset.
We have to group things together by person.
So this ordinance extends the extension for the sunset clause in the original ordinance that was adopted in 2017. And it basically just allows the village to assess any of the pass-along costs from the Flood Brothers, which is our refuse company, onto our residents.
So sorry, this, this is the ordinance, is this the ordinance that we charge the surcharge for garbage for? Or is this the ordinance that gives the senior discount for?
It includes the senior discount.
Is it both of those things?
It's all in one, yep.
It cleans it up, right? Because of the new rate schedule for seniors.
Originally, when it was passed, it did not have the component in for the senior rate. But the senior rate is already included in the contract. So we amended the contract, I think in 2019, to apply a senior rate instead of giving a senior discount directly from the village.
Just to hearken back to our discussion at the budget meeting, the reason that this has a sunset on it is because it was never intended to be permanent. But.
Understand.
Okay.
Yes, there's still a goal to sunset this as a strategy for the future of replacing the revenue source with something else? Or it sounds like we're just counting on paying forward and not reassessing each time? Or is there a strategy to do that?
Yeah, I think we should, you know, maybe not this year. But we should either figure out a way to phase it out or rewrite the ordinance so it doesn't have the sunset clause.
Agreed.
Agreed.
I'd like to see that in the next year, for sure, before the next budget. I think it's important because it's been 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022. So I think it's, you know, obviously, we just passed the budget. I'm sure it's in there.
Right.
So I don't think there's much we can do about this, this, like, right this second, but I think it needs to be a priority.
Right. And a lot of you weren't on the board last year.
Like, the vast majority.
But this is the exact same conversation we had last year.
Right.
And we've had a change in leadership, so that's understandable. But, yeah, we should have, you know, we should, we should, you know, formalize this. You know, we've talked about coming up with a way to phase it out, and we, you know, if that's not what the board wants to do, then we should, we should make it permanent, I think.
Right. I'd say either, I agree.
Yeah.
And I'd prefer phase out. I think that's what we talked about from the beginning, so.
Can this be amended to have it as the last year? And then next budget year?
Well, I don't.
I'm just, just curious.
I don't think you can do that, actually.
I'm looking at Lance.
I mean, it already is built in as being the last year. As, we will have to vote again next year to extend it if we don't. I mean, it's always the last year, technically.
It's that vote again to extend it.
Exactly.
That's kicking the goalpost.
We can't, we can't forbid a future board to have a decision like that.
Yeah.
What I think, you know, is the action item for this, for the group and for everybody else is to put it as an initiative that we really need to work on accomplishing, finding the funds and.
To phase it out.
And phasing it out.
Yeah.
If it's a step or if it's a complete phase out, but figuring out how to get back.
Agreed.
I think we should also reassess what other villages are doing as well. Because pretty much everybody but West Dundee does charge and has to recharge us. So not that we have to be like everybody else.
No.
But it's the way that.
I mean, a lot of communities have, you know, you have to buy a sticker and put it on your garbage can every month or whatever. I don't like that model either.
That's actually way worse to go to the grocery store and buy your sticker.
Right, so.
Well, I think a good practice for us will be to sort of extricate this from the budget process, talk about it independently, and then talk about what other revenue sources the village board may be willing to entertain in order to offset this if it's the desire for us to remove the charge. I would say going forward, that's going to be a difficult conversation because we have such high pension obligations that we haven't identified a revenue source for, and so that will be competing with this for any new revenue source we may identify. But it's certainly something that we should discuss outside of the budget process and think about a strategy for if the goal is to remove it, what might that look like and how long that might take? And if there's some other long-term plan we could work on to achieve that? Or if, if the village board thinks that there's other long-term priorities that are more important to strategize towards, then we would just unwind it. So we can do that maybe in December, January, well ahead of next year's budget schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind having a trash workshop or whatever in like. Like, as you mentioned, some incentives for having a smaller trash can and composting or encouraging people to do more recycling and seeing if there's benefits there. It does seem like it's a hard sell to tax other things like amusement tax and liquor tax, things that there's no service combined with it. But then when there's a direct service like trash tax, that we don't want to pass that tax on. So, I don't know, looking at, just exploring options for whether or not we should, I'm not saying that I'm trying to get rid of it. I'm just new and trying to understand the history of it. Because it sounded like we didn't have it and it was temporary, but it does seem like there's a sense that it should be permanent.
Or it just needs to be one or the other instead of every year, kick the can.
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan.
All right.
No other questions? Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sodder?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to item I. This looks like it's a discussion direction of recommendations for the proposal from the police chiefs that relates to the parade routes. Is that Jim or you?
I'll start the conversation. So Chief Krueger and the West Dundee Police Chief met a few weeks ago to discuss parade routes as it relates to general safety in the village. And as we all know, there's been some tragic events that have occurred in the past. Although rare, they do happen where parade attendees have been injured by vehicles. And the consensus from the two chiefs was a recommendation to bring forward to the board to potentially not have any parades on 72 anymore and to relocate those parades between East and West Dundee. So before you tonight is just a discussion item for us to have a conversation about what the village board thinks is the right direction to go in terms of those parades and if there's a desire to completely eliminate them or to reduce them from, from the number that they currently are downward. I think any, any downward movement is, is good because it reduces the overall liability that presents itself when we do these types of parades. Of course, every time we do a parade, we try to make it as safe as possible, but you can't always guarantee that, that something might happen. So I think it makes sense in some respects to reduce, although I understand there's a lot of feelings that are associated with these activities. These are activities that are sort of our hallmark, you know, fabric of our community, and, and we want to ensure that we're not being overly cautious, but also being cautious and making a decision that you feel is right for the community. So I'm interested to hear your thoughts on whether or not you think we should reduce, and if we do reduce, by how much, and what, what your thoughts are there.
I, I do agree. I think that that was pretty eye-opening, what happened last year. I'd say too, 72 is a major road, hard to shut down. And I think that it also amplifies the amount of, you know, crazy drivers that can be using the neighborhoods as cut-throughs to get around that shutdown, which could also, you know, bleed over and wreck somebody else's day. So I think that we have a beautiful community. We have a large neighborhood that we can host the parades in. And, you know, just get back to the drawing board where they're gonna start and end. So that's my two cents though, so.
And I do think it's compounded by the fact that there's only so many places to get over the river. So we shut down a major one and that just makes it a problem.
I'm intrigued by the proposed parade route for West Dundee, though. They're going up that hill at the end of the parade.
Chief Gorski and I did meet with the veterans groups too to have the conversation because one of their main issues, of course, is to still be able to terminate the parade at Graffleman Park for their event day afterward, the music and the presentation and so forth. And so they recognized that, although I don't believe that they felt that the incline is that much greater than Main Street.
If they're ending at Graffleman, it's not. I'm just thinking of like Dickens, that is pretty much all in the valley. If it does end at Graffleman, the incline's the same one way or another, so.
I think one of the things that, as Chief Gorski and I collaborated on the routes for both communities is that having them basically adjacent to the river still allows both communities to participate and have sightlines and with the footbridge. So it's, it's kind of fun in that respect with still being able to try to stay off of Main Street. I think one of the, one of the issues, of course, is that regardless of which community that would like to have an event like this, which has been wonderful in the past, is that it de facto, facto enforces the other community to participate, right? Because it's a bridge and there's nowhere to go. So, so I think that's why that there was a strong desire from, from the West Dundee officials too to collaborate on a solution in order to make the area safer for everyone in light of current events.
Have, have all of the parade organizers been notified that this is potentially happening? And have you gotten any kind of feedback from them?
So we did talk with the veterans group, you know, because that would be the one coming up in about a month and a half here. And they were completely understood and, and were working with us. And along with that, when myself, Chief Gorski, Erica, and Joe Caverlaro met, we kind of also talked about collaborating with support from each department too to help with whichever side of the river these, these events are on since they would, you know, we would be trying to collaborate to make them, you know, somewhat a unified event, even though they'd be on one jurisdiction or the other. The veterans group seemed fairly understanding and were certainly willing to work with us and, and that we were working with them also to make sure that they had enough staging area to the north and whether or not we needed to also speak with Chief Hoey and the potential for using an auto lot when it's on the west side or, or, you know, the area of bricks or something on the east side when, when we've had, when we've had events. So I think they understood and they felt that they still had enough time, depending on the will of the board on making their adjustments for this year. We haven't reached out to the school district, of course, yet, since that's, that's a ways off and, you know, depending on what your direction would be.
And I forgot to mention too that West Dundee has this on their village board agenda. Not sure if it's tonight or next week, whenever they have their, their upcoming meeting. So they're gonna have the same conversation, and then we're gonna take away the consensus from this conversation. They're gonna take away the consensus from theirs. We'll meet again and come up with sort of the final plan that the board can then approve.
Seems like what happened was, I mean, the person that did that, they were, it was intentional. It wasn't an accident, so I'm not sure it makes it any safer putting it on a different street because they could just drive to that other location. But I think the traffic is a compelling case. I mean, it is a pretty busy road. Yeah, it's not good to shut it down. I would agree with that. So I guess in that sense, I am okay with not using 72, yes.
And St. Patrick's Day Parade isn't affected because it doesn't go on 72.
We have the template already to do it.
Right. Yeah. I guess the only one I'm concerned about is Dickens, because there's gonna be a, over who has the Dickens Parade.
Yeah. I can see that too, yeah.
I mean, it might be that we say that's the only one.
I mean, there is, of course, the option, I guess, to have two parades, but.
I'm picturing all the people on the footbridge. It's like a mirror down the river. Right, exactly. That would be better, just waving each other. I, that is my only concern. The other ones, completely understood. I think it's really beneficial.
I think.
I think it's the right way to go. It's just Dickens is gonna be, I don't know how we'll get around that.
I mean, we did talk about potentially alternating or something too. And I think there was even some recognition on their part that we have the nicer space because of River Street rather than trying to do it on Main Street and on the West Dundee side and having the windows and actually having a nicer spot for, for that, but.
I could see.
Not that I wouldn't be partisan.
I could, I could see coming up with alternating or something like that. I just would hate to give up.
Yeah.
That part of that parade, you know, that would be hard. St. Patrick's is already, as you said, it's, it's here anyway, so.
It is one of the joint events that both East Dundee businesses and West Dundee businesses really, really focus on. When you think about Memorial Day Parade, okay, it starts, but it doesn't really get into River Street.
Do something on the footbridge.
Where this one definitely features it all.
Yeah, it does.
So.
That would be my worry. That would be, that's the only, something would have to be handshake agreement on that.
The question would be, is it all or nothing? Do we just move the three off and keep Dickens on 72? Or does that just completely defeat your?
Well, I think to Erica's point too, I think anything less is better, probably, you know, depending on what the, the final decision is. But certainly, they are, they are certainly manpower-intensive as well as, you know, a safety concern, especially at that time of year or two, depending on weather. So, but, you know, certainly, we can, you know, follow your direction and work with however you want to go with it. But I think there was a recognition that both, whether it's Dickens or whether it's St. Pat's, is that the business of community on both sides of the river benefit equally because of the sheer number of people that come out for both of those events.
Right. And then we're looking at, is it two different route options?
I think that was to try to give the organizers options.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure. Like, do I, we need to talk about this?
No, no, that was more, yeah.
Perfect.
I mean, would, would, are we doing any action on this tonight? No, no.
So the only thing I'm requesting tonight is just a general direction so that when, when we go back and discuss this with them, I can say the village board's first preference is that we alternate or whatever it is, and/or their second preference is that we, you know, keep Dickens on and the other ones we move. So just a general sense of where everybody's at would be helpful for us to continue to have the dialogue, find a, find a solution that works for both communities.
I'm good with leaving Dickens on. If we spare the manpower for everything else and then leave that as our, like, one big, like, hey, we're shutting down 72 once.
Once in the year.
I'm like, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, that, or if there's, if that is a hardship and you, and the officers and you and Chief in West Dundee are adamantly against it, then. in West Dundee are adamantly against it, then let's come up with some way of working together and alternating or something.
Well, and it is preliminary anyway, no matter what, because you need to know how the West Dundee Board weighs in, too, because it's got.
My preference would be, as Rich said, to have it be the one, but.
I was thinking, we have St. Patrick's Day anyway on this side, and then with Graffleman Park Memorial Parade, and West Dundee, and then you alternate Dickens and homecoming.
Could do something like that. Where's, can I ask a question, as the one who doesn't have a child in high school around here? Where is the homecoming parade? Does it go down seventy-two, like, to Graffleman? We're just apparently always on town that weekend.
That's a fairly modern event, too. I mean, I remember when I was on the road years ago, that it never even hit Dundee.
Yeah.
You know, it stayed within, pretty much, Carpentersville or terminated at CMS.
Right.
Back then, you know, but, you know, it's a homecoming parade that doesn't go home.
That's what I was sort of, I was thinking about that when I saw it was on the list. I was like, don't, homecoming parades usually stop at the school? That was my.
If I remember, maybe twenty-five years ago, we did try King's Road a couple times.
Yeah.
But it just wasn't as conducive, I think, for spectators.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, based on conversations, I think, you know, Memorial Day Parade makes most sense in West Dundee, given Graffleman Park, St. Patrick's, we've always had here, so that's evened out. Either give Dundee Crown the option of where they want to have it, or alternate it, and then first choice would be, for me, would be to keep Dickens on seventy-two. And if not, then alternate. Anybody else want to answer?
I agree with that.
Sounds fine, yeah.
And if they do, do you know where it goes, the Dickens Parade? Does that go all the way up Main Street, all the way to Graffleman?
It starts in West Dundee, actually, over by Woodfire, and then comes across the bridge over by, over under River Street.
Yeah.
Because maybe there's a way to start at Graffleman, stay off the Main Street, and just get on seventy-two for a short bit, and only close off a smaller portion of it, if for.
I think for safety reasons, whether it's a half a block or three blocks, we're pretty much stuck from sixty-eight to thirty-one.
Okay.
Because of worrying about through traffic, or people trying to snake their way through the neighborhoods, and then try to get around, or, so I think that's, it's kind of an all or nothing situation, unfortunately. They've tried to, it's my understanding, they've tried to shorten that a little bit, and then people end up getting trapped in the neighborhoods, and probably more so on their side than ours, but then it gets worse, because there's nowhere for them to go.
Right.
Yep. I think you summarized it nicely, so we'll go with that direction, and see what happens over there, and then come back with a solution.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I make a recommendation, point of order, I guess you would call it? I'd like to move public comment up to now. It's been a long meeting, there's still a lot of people here, and I think at least one of them wants to speak. We could always do all these other items afterwards.
Yep.
Okay, so do I need to make a motion for that, just move to?
You know what, and I, this came up before, and I have to say, I forgot about it. We, I do need to check the code to make sure that the public comment isn't codified as to where it goes, and some communities it is, they like, actually codify, it is. Okay, so we, so we can talk about it and give direction, but a motion really wouldn't be appropriate, but direction, and we can get an ordinance on the next meeting. That, what I would suggest is, we'll just, we'll just take that all out of the code and put in language that says that the agenda is set by the manager in consultation with the village president, or something like that, and then direction will be given, so it'll have it where you want it to go.
So, what you're saying is, it's hardcoded, and we can't move it? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is.
I think he was talking about two different things.
Yeah.
And he said a little bit further down the road.
I see what you're saying. You're saying it's hardcoded, that it's always going to be scheduled at the end of the meeting, but.
But you're asking right now, can we just move it up to right now?
Right, exactly.
Let's go ahead and do that, and then we'll tackle the rest of that at a later date.
But that was something I wanted to, it slipped my mind, and so we'll do that. We'll repeal that language.
Okay.
Or we'll have the village board discuss whether or not.
Correct.
I'm not ready to unilaterally say that that's the direction they want to go, because I'm not sure it is. So, we'll have that conversation.
Okay. So, am I making a motion or not?
Yes.
Yes, I will move to, I will move to move public comment to the current position on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make comment or have questions for the board? Agenda or not agenda items? I see Chris.
Can I just introduce myself?
Sure.
I know it's a new board, it's been a while, so I'll get back here. My name's Chris Kias, I'm the, excuse me, county board member for District Twenty-three, just north of here in Algonquin and Carpentersville, municipal president of the forest preserve. So, and I've spoken with some of the board members previously about items where the forest preserve and the village overlap, like the trail, for one thing. And so, I just wanted to introduce myself and mention a couple of things that are happening on the county board and the forest preserve. We are planning this year to remove, as you probably know, Carpenter's Dam, and the Friends of the Fox is having an event at the dam tomorrow night to help explain, it starts there and it's going to go to Rosie's upstairs, after that, to explain how the removal of the dam will go. Hopefully, it'll be this fall, that we're planning the engineering and everything, moving it along. We've had the money guaranteed by the state IDNR for about ten years, but as you know, in government, things move way slower than you think they're going to, and so that's something that the forest preserve and we have, all have in common along the river here. And then, secondly, on the Long Meadow Parkway, you probably have read that we've got, from the state, seventeen point five million dollars to help retire the toll on the bridge up there, so, and hopefully, next year, or in two years, twenty-four, they'll be able to give us more, because it will, it's about half of what we need to retire the toll, and that's a possibility, which may be about the time that the bridge is finished, and we get through there on the Long Meadow Parkway. We're shooting because of the contamination that has to be remediated at where the old firing range was. We're looking at the fall of last year, but the IEPA said that the method that they wished to use was not appropriate, so they were back to doing testing and redesigning how we're going to mitigate the lead and diesel contaminants in that stretch, right at the end of the bridge, because the bridge is all done, we just need to finish that last hundred yards or so. But they're thinking, maybe then into next year, twenty-three, they'll have the plan, the remediation, and the completion of the, that stretch right there at the end of the Bolt's Road intersection with the circle, and lots of other stuff happening in the county, but this is already a long meeting, so. It's nice to be back, nice to meet all you and see all you, but.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'll be around.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Nope, this meeting's done.
I just wanted to say that if you've spoken already, you're not obligated to stay for the entire meeting. We will not get our feelings hurt if we feel like you have other things that you wanted to.
Unless, we know how interesting this is.
If you're enjoying this, though, please stay.
My wife said that molly's are down.
Right, enjoy that, molly's.
All right, sorry.
All righty. That's fine. Okay, so then, I guess we'll, the financial reports are in your, are the warrants listed in your packet? Any questions? Or we can direct it directly to Brandon's or the appropriate department head. There is a Arbor Day proclamation.
You don't need to.
So, April twenty-ninth is Arbor Day, and I guess also, thanks to our Public Works Department, we are also named a tree city again this year, so.
Oh, yay.
Yeah, so, I thought it was just a little achievement.
Thanks, Ben.
So, thanks. So, go plant a tree. Staff reports. I'm going to switch things up.
Scott?
No.
No report, thank you.
All righty.
Nope, Steph.
What? No report.
No, and trustee. Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
No report.
So, I was at Mockingbird the other day, and Kathleen, I believe it's Kathleen, the owner, Catherine, Catherine, yes, she was talking to me about whether or not we were going to have the farmer's market, asking, and I don't know a lot about that, but she offered to be a CSA drop-off, if we decide to do something like that, or a pickup spot. And I thought that would be really awesome, and I don't know if all the last farms still would come out. I know they do something for online, but back at Crossford Ankle, we had a CSA drop-off spot there, but I thought that was really great, and it could be a cool replace, and if we don't do the big farmer's market, that we have something we offer to the village, hey, we're going to have a CSA pickup spot here in town, and it's a business owner that's willing to do it, so I just wanted to kind of bring that up, and maybe that's, it can go somewhere. There's a lot I don't know about the ins and outs of the farmer's market and events, but I thought that was awesome, if it's something we can figure out.
I would welcome that, because unfortunately, getting, you know, full-time, big-time farmers at that Saturday market has become difficult. I don't know how successful they've been, or will be this year.
Yeah.
Because sometimes it starts late, because we're in Illinois, so crops aren't coming in until later in the summer, but.
And it snowed last night?
But that could be a really good alternative. You know, the farmer's market, but we have this option, and, you know, she's totally on the.
Yeah, I was trying to get them to do that, and they were not into that, so.
Got it.
Yeah, Kathleen wants to do it.
She said, yeah, yeah, she's excited about it, and that idea.
You know, like that idea? Love it.
Yeah.
Love it.
So, that's all I have.
Cool. Rich?
No reports.
Uh, no report.
I don't have a report.
No report.
Oh, other than, I'm sorry, other than the arts, first arts committee meeting is.
Oh, yeah.
Yay.
Wednesday.
I will help Trish out with that, so.
And Anthony.
Okay. That's it.
No report.
No.
No report.
All righty. Chief?
Nothing more than that, thank you.
All right. Phil? Chris?
I have a couple things. The carbon complex that's being built.
Use the microphone, please.
Buildings that are being built, the north building, those have a temporary occupancy permit. The things that need to be completed are the site work, so it's weather-related, so they've got a sixty-day completion date on that, and by then, the south building may also be completed. And also Emerson slash Appleton Electronics in one forty-five Prairie Lake, Unit C, they also got a temporary occupancy for their facility, and their electronic company that produce and test electronical fixtures, light fixtures, and those sorts of things, so that's what's going on right now.
So, that's a new business then?
Pardon me?
That's a new business?
It's a new, yeah. Yes, yes.
They relocated from Skokie?
They relocated from Skokie, yes. So, they have, I think they have around fifteen employees. It's a big facility, they invested several million dollars into the build-out.
Where is this located at?
Pardon me?
Where is it located at?
It's on Prairie Lakes Road, one forty-five, right next to the Coggle Nuttin Ball.
Okay.
Coggle Nuttin Ball owns the building, and they lease out the space to Emerson. You approved their sign several months ago.
I'm sure it is. What about the trees? We were, you guys said you were trying to figure out who had, whose property, or not property it was, but whose authority it was.
We don't have a hundred percent conclusion on that. It is the village's, we were thinking it's the village's property, as far as incorporated in the village.
Yeah.
But the county's actually trying to force us to come up with some sort of annexation agreement that proves that. There's deeds that we're looking at back from eighteen hundreds and.
Are they trying, are they saying that they think they have the authority to govern it, or?
They don't know, because the tax rules say it's not incorporated in the village, and since that tax code says it's not, they're trying to get us to show them a document that says that it is, so. I mean, Joe looked at some of that, but.
And unfortunately, there are a lot of ways, legal ways, procedures to annex property. Most of the time, almost all the time, it's, there should be an ordinance, whether it's by agreement or forcible annexation, but there are annexation procedures that use the courts, so it's, it could be hard if there are no records.
If you look at a map, before, there was an East Dundee and a West Dundee, there was a Dundee, the town thereof, and it was, well, it was on that map, but whether or not that was anything that was legal at the time, so we're still working on it, but.
We're going to the wayback machine.
And the county can say that they have proof that is.
No.
No, the county, no, no, what, what the issue.
They can't prove either.
Well, the issue is that it's not being taxed. It's on the county's map, it's not listed as incorporated, and in fact, my guess is the village receives no tax from that area. And so, they're saying that that prima facie, absent anything else, means it's not in the village, because the only thing there is says it's not. And so, the county's asking, what do you have?
Right.
If you annexed it, you should have records.
So, to give us jurisdiction to rule over it on this floodplain issue, we did find out that the parcel was purchased for a thousand dollars. So, it was actually owned by the county at one point, because taxes weren't being paid, so the county took it through a tax sale, and then they subsequently sold it. I have all the records, the exact dates and everything, it was like twenty-twelve or something, they sold it to this individual, they then sold it again.
Awesome.
So, it's kind of strange that they, with, but that's what they decided to do, so.
That's a real head scratcher.
Yeah.
And ownership is a totally separate issue from incorporation.
All right.
You know, the county can own property in the village.
So, the recent owner purchased it for a thousand dollars.
All right. All right, and then the water tower, are they starting, I mean, you, it was cold today. There was snow.
By the way.
So, did they not start?
They, the contractor came into town last week, and so they're currently working on the wet interior of the town.
Oh, right, they were going to start, yes, all right.
So, they've, they've pressure washed the inside, and so they're going to.
They have started.
Pardon?
So, they have started, then?
They have, yeah.
All right, good.
So, not much outside currently, until we, we should see some exterior work here later this week, because temperatures will be in the sixties.
Maybe, maybe by August, it will be sixty degrees out.
Well, they're anticipating wrapping the entire project up by, hopefully by the end of May, or probably early, early June at the latest, so.
We'll keep our fingers crossed on the weather.
Yeah. All right.
Going to call anyone else out, Scott?
Sorry.
All righty, Joe?
No.
All right. Do we have a need for an executive session tonight?
Yes, but I think we, Brandon's.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Brandon.
Did you? You do have a need for an executive session, but if you wanted a five-minute recess, you can do that, because. Yes.
Well, what, which.
Real estate.
Real estate, oh.
So, we need a motion, sale of property, I guess.
Yeah, so I will move to close to the public and media under the provisions of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, five IL CS one twenty.
Yeah.
Slash two five, or C five.
C five or C six?
C five.
C five.
Acquisition.
Okay.
Acquisition.
And we will not return to public meeting, we will close out of executive session.
Adjourn, right, adjourn, straight from executive session.
Yes.
Second.
All right.